All right, it's six thirty. It is time for the public hearing, Monday, December twelfth, six thirty. And if you will please rise for opening exercises. He fire head. Heavenly Father, I'm grateful to our land and to those who live here in our communities. Give each of us a service of calm and may we put high value and justice on our honesty and service. Protect us through our holiday, protect us all week, and we always will. I pray that we be just as good as the states of America and as we're a country of righteousness. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bring him up for questioning. Roll call room.
Yes.
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 You got a heart?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, oral recognition for anyone that signed.
Yes. My name is Chris White Water, um, he was. I thought that too much, uh, was, I didn't want to be able to. It's in the alley, it wasn't. Um, I checked for Charleston County, and they don't want me to go over there for now. On page eighteen. In section, I think, we can judge for one would be considered for under rounds, simply for one first of the year. On a license plumber, like I've never ever had a licensed plumber in my house, but I can afford one. But, uh, and I fixed all my roof by myself. But, uh, Austin, uh, water system, this reading that part up, this thing you have to have a point of repair. And you can get that from the hardware store where you buy your parts or whatever. But I don't know why we have to have a licensed plumber to repair a small roof. So I would like to have just that part, buy a licensed plumber to remove some of this water. Yeah.
Eighteen. Do you have anyone else to sign up with what you speak during this public hearing? Okay, so the ordinance for dealing ordinance number twenty fifteen, that year zero two, managing solid waste, second and final reading. Would anyone like to speak to the ordinance for dealing ordinance number twenty fifteen, that year zero two, managing solid. I'm trying to tell him the way you want.
Oh. That's not true.
He's talking about number six, the pollution for wastewater collection, taking the recent rate.
Well, that's the answer. Yes. Okay, uh, that's, are you making something where you're maybe having a couple of students in that?
Well, um, we'll be doing a little bit of anything that we can type out there. Would anyone like to speak to the ordinance for dealing ordinance number, somebody that's seen that year here, two, nine, solid waste? Okay, number five, you're managing solid waste, second and final reading. Would anyone like to speak to the regular, you manage the solid waste? Number six, regulations for wastewater collection, took the recent rate. Would anyone like to speak on the resolutions for wastewater collection, took the recent rate, we've been getting with. Open comments? Heaven, there are no others. I'm ready to go into the closing of the public hearing. Back to the doctor. Roll call both, please.
Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Mosey?
Yes.
Mr. Holston?
Yes.
We're now going into our regular commission meeting for Monday, December twelfth. We have already done the, um, opening exercises, please proceed with the freedom of information. Roll call both, on the roll call room.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Here.
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 Number three, proclamation, honor and recognize David Hoffman, Director of Wastewater Service. David, do you want to join me up here? Proclamation, honor and recognize Director of Wastewater Services, David Joseph Hoffman, Jr. For his service to the James Brown Public Service District. Whereas David Hoffman began his career as the wastewater superintendent, July twenty seventh, two thousand nine. And will retire on July, on January thirty first, twenty twenty three, when I. Whereas David became the Director of Wastewater Services on June fifteenth, twenty fifteen. And whereas David was instrumental in assisting with such successful provision of recovery services. After seven severe storms during the quake. David ensured the replacement of failing sewer lines, force man, manhole within the J I P S D wastewater system. David was also instrumental in rehabilitation and capacity upgrade of numerous compensation. David has overseen numerous utility relocation projects. As well as facility improvement projects on the signal point complex. David can be proud of that, that he is leading the James Brown Public Service District better than he found it. And whereas the James Brown Public Service District is proud to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of its employees. David Hoffman has applied his knowledge, training, and courage for the betterment of our citizens and service of our communities. Now therefore, I commission chair, and on behalf of the James Brown Public Service District Commission, do hereby extend a heartfelt thank you. To David Hoffman for your nearly fourteen years of loyal service to the James Brown Public Service District. You got two of us.
That's why Mr. Bond said come stand with Ray. Ray Hoffman. Very confident.
All right, now we have the new fire representative, Wayne Sedgus.
Hope he's staying up. Um, please, in honors, to, uh, introduce our newest employees. These are three firefighters that just came out of recruiting school. They graduated last Friday. Two o'clock in the afternoon, they went through their tenth, uh, eight weeks at the South Carolina Fire Academy. She's on her third flight, on a fighter two. And, um, the fire department is working, they're getting graduated last Friday. This is Vincent Brown. This is Ariel Gudisman. And this is Clint Broadwater. Broadwater in a blue shirt, and Vincent started today for that weekend party down. Those are on Sunday, and you can work on Monday. Every other starts on Wednesday on the blue shirt.
Thank you for coming. Oral recognition, if anyone has signed up. We don't have anyone waiting to sign, though. The consent agenda from the solid waste committee, November fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Wastewater Committee, November fourteenth, twenty twenty two. And regular commission meeting on November twenty first, twenty twenty two. Does anyone have, um, any? Any alterations to this, or shall we approve it? I'll move together.
Motion to approve.
Yes.
Second. Question. Roll call both, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
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 All right, original question on running eight agreement.
All right, so, uh, what you have in your packet, it sounds very similar to what we approved in April. Uh, when the town of Mount Pleasant was added to the, uh, auto aid. This is, uh, to add the city of the Isle of Tom. And so, right now, uh, we are planning to have the, uh, signing. Of the auto aid agreement at the north, uh, or in North Charleston, at the Fire Museum. On Wednesday, the fourth of January, at eleven AM. And so, what this does, um, uh, if the, uh, commission, um, were to approve, uh, it would be to authorize both the district manager and the fire chief. To fully execute the agreement, and all seven of the entities will be there for photo op with all the process. Um, and we'll be doing the signing on that day.
I make the motion that the, um, the personal partner on my agreement. Roll call both, please. Roll call both, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Mosey?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Presentation of the James Brown Public Service District, twenty twenty three to twenty twenty seven, the teaching plan, why you know the board is doing.
Good evening, Chris, thank you for having me here. You all have had opportunities to copy this, you know, a week ago, or a couple of months ago, that I was at a fire, and, uh, okay. And I obviously, looking at those things for, uh, for these. Uh, I want to walk you through the document real quick, uh, I want to give a little bit of context to this. Uh, the strategic plan is a high level, overview document that consists of four, uh, goals, the division and the mission for the PSD over the next five years. Uh, this is the first step, the next step would be the implementation plan, and it's that would begin in January, February. Uh, we'll do this in terms of, to be able to allow this, this commission to approve this particular formal. Because of the time it was lost, we have done a commission to the knowledge, we'll make sure that we have an implementation plan, that we have any major, new commission that's in that process. Uh, as well, so the implementation plan we've done over the January and February, thought we're coming to do that, the commission in February, the implementation plan. Which was much more about the projects, if the people are going to call on the survey and all that. We'll be giving them one of the meetings, because it's a project, we'll put the document, uh, very quickly. Uh, again, this is the PDF document that, uh, we will put on, if adopted, if learned adopted, uh, on the website. Uh, just a brief table of contents, if those you, uh, were included here, again, the high level document. Uh, recognizing the commission, there's a document, so we'll do that. Uh, statement from the chair, uh, commission put it into the, to the words of this. Uh, the three quarters, the idea again, there's more people who may not mean, they're not aware of PSD, what it is, who you are, and what you do. And so we included a, uh, three, uh, maps, one looking at the jurisdiction. Uh, the other was looking at the wastewater system, and then the fire, uh, where the four fire halls are, uh, within the PSD. Then we give a little bit about the, through the design process, we have a new design, uh, that gives a overview for anyone not familiar with the new plan, the process, and what the commission took. Uh, to go through this, uh, we worked in pre-planning, where, uh, the, uh, PSD, uh, uh, manager, Dave, uh, the C E C, acted with a pre-planning exercise back in May. Uh, we were brought in as a professional facilitator, we had the public input meeting in August. Uh, we moved the survey process, we worked with, uh, the King and enforcement, worked with rankings, uh, through the survey, into whether or not. Uh, the workshop, uh, we've had, we had here a couple of months ago, we, we really formalized the vision. Uh, the vision for PSD by twenty twenty eight, the James Brown PSD will be recognized as a model special purpose business, providing excellent services. Through skilled training, well-resourced fires, solid waste, and wastewater service. Uh, mission is to provide high-quality, uh, fire, solid waste, and wastewater services in a cost-effective and professional manner. And then we kept the core values that we're, we did over the last few years, uh, by, by seeing that through the mission, with our safety, teamwork, respect, integrity, dedication, excellence, courtesy. Really the core of this document, boy, it's down to these next pages, these goals. What are the overall things that we're aiming for over the next five years? And what came through, allowed to clear in this process, uh, reading is high on this list, every number one on this list, is to improve communication. That there is a desperate need for the PSD to better communicate, uh, who you are as an organization, what is it that you do, uh, and then how you do it. So it's a little bit of everything from what exactly is the PSD. Uh, if you get the calls, you know, if you had surveys, or people were commenting on things that are drastic, or that are outside of your control, that's not what you do. Again, about being proactive in terms of that communication about the PSD, about what you do, with the players, the solid waste, and wastewater, uh, wastewater collection. Uh, as part of all this. The other part two is, um, there's a lot of things that point with, the PDF, the way of proofing, all this stuff comes into the communication piece, uh, when you look at that. Uh, the second piece down here is to make, uh, meaningful improvements, again, it's the understanding of the, the yield property that the PSD has, uh, those fire changes in particular, and then the other, um, uh, the signal point location, and all the service, uh, phase, all those sort of things, all the, the physical point equipment. All operating with PSD, uh, that we need to be capitalizing on those. Uh, investment in machinery and equipment for the, uh, need portion, so there's a number of things that fall into that category, but, uh, trucks and our equipment, obviously, fall on that. We retain, uh, recruit and develop talent staff. Again, a perfect analogy, that's the retention of staff, and approval of staff that have been, uh, big issues with PSD. And then, uh, improve internal operations, and this was kind of, uh, improved, uh, internal operations, kind of a pecked off, because some of them would be quite, if you can, in some of the other areas, and so it was, you know, including some of the software, you know, uh, the phone system, they were keeping that kind of, that kind of would fall into that category. Uh, and then improve relationships and partner on the vision and analogy that the PSD has been good at, that exist in partnership with folks like the talent of James Brown, and to this cost, and these are it. Uh, and so those are, those are the main competing goals. Uh, and then we get into a little bit of the acknowledgement, and then a little bit about facilitator, and then. The last two pages are results of the SWAP analysis that we did, and the results from the survey that we made over the last time, uh, that I was here. So that again, in a nutshell, is, is this piece, and again, the next step, uh, will be the implementation plan, and that, that will occur in January and February, and then start as soon as that is completed, February, March. Uh, for, uh, and that will outline more specific products that will fall into that folder that I'm organizing. If you have any other questions?
So I'm either speaking to the, I'm either speaking to the exchange club in January or February, and at two times, directing to some of this stuff out, that they work to work it on, and those sort of doing. As far as the implementation plan, obviously, you know, we're going to be working, uh, we're going to kind of lay it out, and that, that will go with the budget discussion. As far as, you know, once we incorporate the issue into the budget, we're going to have the funding to do it, and we kind of explain what are those that are going to be included by.
I'll just bring that, um, take, um, the church is the title, the church is, I find that on T P A, it's next. Very well. We just kind of, bring that the P and B, you know, like that. And there's that, a comment that's not in the government, even the government, I'm not sure if you mean it's many or less.
I, we, uh, one in the first quarter, I know that.
Get our mission at, we need to play with it, and something. And, you know, I was just going to make a comment that, the, the fact that we all have fifteen kids, uh, um, or baby or mom.
Maybe, which, so the reason it says the six, I mean, they were, yes, we received ninety-four and seven in this document, the twenty-six that are reflected in, uh, that next, are those who are able to, um.
At one question?
Yeah, yeah, as it came as being actually being with PSD again, because there was so much confusion about, am I on the PSD or not, and we got working on that question, we'll cover it, Karen, so. It was still going.
And I know that, you know, there were, there's a lot of families, they were, I guess, like, um, kind of a change, that a hundred people are probably, most of them employees, and, so, like, it was from here, and the fall, and election time, and, you know, it was about Christmas time, and you started going.
I, you know, I, I think there's a number of factors that you need to look at now. Um, again, to me, the word of a PSD is, you tend to have more engagement when it's not working. You know? I would say, you know, PSD is in both works, and, you know, they're kind of the offensive line of, of, of local government works, and, you know, an offensive line doesn't work at all, offensive doesn't work, and so I think, you know, the services of, yeah, people like that, the, the fire department didn't come, and they were called, we can hear about it. If the wastewater wasn't being collected, you hear about it, it's always been collected, you hear about it. So, I, I think it speaks a little bit to their job, that you guys do, that people are pretty satisfied with it. But again, it would, it would have been nice to have, you know, a, a better.
This is a gorgeous picture, I'm not sure where it is, if it's anybody's care, if it's not, if it's, if it's in the tall.
No, this is, that's where the crossing required, Holland or, or. Was it in the Holland?
Okay, and this is from the park, and we're here.
I did give the permission, right?
Oh, okay, no, I just wanted, you know, I'm not, that, is that a report, or? Well, you know, the same.
Next time you all can come to the photo, I'm not tired.
Okay.
Yeah, that's three points.
I don't have a good camera right now.
Well, we get.
Camera is hanging out here for one.
I, I'm done here, too. Are there any, are there any comments or questions, that have been approved?
Section. Roll call both, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
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 First one?
Yes.
Yes.
Fifty years, twenty-two, financial statement audit report update.
All right, so you have the audit report in your packet. And, um, during my district manager report, I'm going to go through several different pages. And what I'm asking is, um, that if you review this, and you have any questions about the financial statements. If you could, um, send me questions by Wednesday, the eighteenth of January, and I'll send out a reminder email. I can get all those questions to the audit team, and they can come with answers. And I know, um, you know, this is a long document, with a lot of different things in there, um, I'm going to handle some of the highlights, and obviously, Karen's going to handle some of the highlights as well. Um, and then if you, if, if something doesn't make sense in here, and you want, uh, um, more explanation, Karen would be able to do that, um. This is the audit team right now, and so he had a conflict, he couldn't be here tonight, and he is coming on the next, the regular commission meeting on the twenty-third of January. Um, presented report to talk about the audit report, and the opinion. Um, we'll get into some of the details in the district manager report, but what, what you should be, um, noticing, there's a clean opinion, um, there are modified opinions, and there are not, uh, significant deficiencies. Or material weaknesses that are identified in the arm of the federal control, so that is a, a good thing. And so we'll get, uh, into more of the, their district manager report.
We will be welcome into. Order of the ordinance for dealing number twenty fifteen, that year zero two, managing solid waste, second and final reading.
All right, so, uh, what I have in there, uh, besides the, um. Ordinance is the update, the brochures, and I tried to highlight, as I could, in yellow, as far as, uh, the J I P S D holiday. Um, the lease was added into there, that was, uh, incorporated into the, um. Into the policy manual last year, twenty twenty-one, uh, boats and boat owners, we no longer take. Um, we talk about the, uh, we advertise where the J I P S D holidays are, um, in the newsletter, we begin that in January, and that talks about, um, the days and the slide days, and when comes a day later than the normal pickup. Um, we, I'm for sure, we also talked about a third party purchase, and a hundred and sixty-five dollars annual fee. Um, we add in there more specifics, uh, property owner, the responsible tenant, who without any convictions. Major Lynn could be cut less than four feet in length, and titles no larger than five feet yard, so when you wash it, or when you find the edge of the yard green. We place parallel with the road, and so we give more specifics about what they're watching. And that.
Well, I think we'll see more, because I read it, and it's on the third time, I finally get on the car, and I get a phone, because I was at the bottom of the hole, and I was just, kept on looking at it. But I was stopped by fifty, fifty-two dollars, two dollars, huh? That first second, or the time we were doing, and we got, that was the last time that I even knocked it out, it was up there. Um, uh. You know, that little bottom box, and you want to, it's like a, it's like a reminder of the, I was, look back, the worst, I didn't know that it was worse than, um.
So please remember recycling, you know, right?
Yeah, um, I just, I must have helped him, probably, just never noticed it was something more hard work, you know, and what. I think it was a phone, it was a little bit better. I think it was, I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, I just, I'm looking at it, it's really, and I'm looking at that one, it's in the front there. And I was, it makes sense to me, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, it's not mine. So that was, it was a phone, I think it was, but I'm, it's part of that, it was a phone, especially, it's been taken deep on the street, all the time, you know, here. It was other than that, four seconds, I don't know if it's, it's, you know, it's, uh, you can, can you hear in there, I think it's you guys. Yeah, uh, anyone who just moved it a whole lot, any of your work, and, um. We actually, it's a video, or a video. Yeah, um. Well, it's not even a movie, it's just part of, I just think that was something down in the yard, yeah, if you don't, I just get my, my. Sometimes when you use it someplace, and you find it there, it comes with a phone, but you should finally try to fill that part up. And there's a part that is typically, possibly, it's going to be.
That's what you use the, um, the acrobat, to try to physically modify all the text boxes.
Is that like a publisher box? We have some of the, and they're decent, and it's more, right, it's kind of going around, you know, someone who can enter that phone. It's kind of going around, you know, someone who can answer that one. So how do I, I'm a little bit angry. I don't know. Thank you. I want to share a little section here or a couple of other things. Now we.
I don't know.
You think so you would, you would mention that, but of course you would.
So uh, the ordinance, you know, the order was requested that we uh, come with a modified brochure. Um, the ordinance repealing the ordinance that the commissioner's going to change in that item. P S D ordinance that repeals the information from any state or review. The current, the same ordinance, we're ready to change it in the back.
Can I make a motion for the ordinance repealing ordinance from the twenty-fifteen that year, there's two months to follow with the second type of reason? And. I'm, I'm just, you know, um, the last one, the two thousand and fifteen, and I'm just being a little bit of a weatherman still for the members on board. This doesn't have to be very often and it changes or works that minimal in terms of fourteen furniture and things like that. So I'm just um, just a comment here, but that's just me. I, I like having fun, our children. Any other? What, what? Do you want? I don't.
Nothing's something.
I just want to know.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
And a resolution for wastewater collection, I think a little problem factors really are.
Right, so the um, the resolution for, well, it is um, went through the fourteenth in November, uh, we just passed the minutes for the solid waste remaining. Recommended a resolution for remaining solid waste which considered by the full J I P S D commission. So your packet also contains the updated J I P S D solid waste regulations brochure. The rest of the resolution for remaining solid waste was publicly advertised. And the public hearing is scheduled for early this evening. So members of the commission can consider a motion to approve or reject the resolution that may have been tolerated.
I'm not imagining it's true proof.
Exactly.
Section. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maha. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Rye?
So.
More.
Yes.
Resolution for water, wastewater collection system in the range.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm all good, very sorry. You go back, or you look for the side for the side, I'm not here, I apologize.
Yes. There is that.
I apologize.
All right.
Order of the wastewater collection system, you can rate it under thirteen.
Okay, so here is the package that came with the updated wastewater collection system in the range, a resolution. And on Monday, the eleventh of November, the wastewater committee recommended that the legislation be considered by the full J I P S D commission. The resolution was publicly advertised and the public hearing was held earlier this evening. And members of the commission can consider a motion to approve or reject the. The one that is.
Yeah, let's see. There's the commission, I won't be. I'm gonna post a name on there. I like to. I'll give. I just, I just want to make a point that in very good, in very forward, I think there's the next one, you're right. So, but I think the analysis of the body. Another thought, I want to, so I can give an idea of what we're working on.
Yeah, um, I would like to make a comment on eighteen section O. Four point four. That should be twice the order five, three, five.
Those four words at the end of the first sentence.
We're finding, everybody's trying to see where it's at. When a change, I mean, it looks like that one.
That's easy to understand, that's right.
All right, and I'm sure, who's on here, let's get that in the other. I think that's five.
And here it is, this is your leave adjustment, not for the first word repair. Do not be tardy for the leave, for your leave adjustment.
For the fact that you not be tardy, that you have a, you could do anything.
Yeah, maybe you got your old record.
Yeah. Oh. That's why I uh, are, no, we're gonna have a day lunch. About Sunday.
Well, it's, it's a judgment. I think. I think it's not there.
It was, I would agree with my question too, the adjustment, then the commission or all the, made a motion to amend page fifteen, section O, and moving the last four orders to that question. And now it's section eighteen, section O.
So it's actually section four point four.
Section four point four, um, section O. I'm sorry, I was doing my original focus. She made a motion to amend to, 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 to four words about the life plumber. So, if that's provided for. I mean, so, section, and a second to the new, well, removed. And now we're. Our, this. I would like to look at this up further.
Yeah, I know.
And I, I disagree with anything that change that was standing on already need for you. It has never been part of the board. We've got several iterations of the right need for this and you know, this part was our initiative to kind of leave this to the dresser.
Well, not many five, I don't know much, but I realized when I looked at it, it all goes with the dresser. And I, I didn't have a lot of fun. Oh, people do this.
And there was the life plumber, um, the issue at hand is that a lot of times people don't understand or realize what's happening, what actually happened to them. Again, that's why.
Oh, I'm not questioning you.
But, I mean, it's just not for me. It's not anybody else's case of their own, I'm.
Well, first, I was wondering why wastewater could be.
Not saying that would be never leave, just they're not in the.
I think it was, I mean, that's.
But, um, so.
It was in the last one? Okay, I, I mean, it would make that uncomfortable to keep to it. Uh, and that is one, you do that, you do that, but I'm just saying, and I'm uncomfortable, doesn't it change? It's not for the official commissioner.
How much time do I need to think about that?
Might, we haven't talked to anyone else.
Oh, I might share with you, I agree with you. Because there are people who are able, they're not licensed, if they're ill, through years or whatever. And, you know, that is why I, I respect.
And child school water system could not require you to have a licensed plumber. And the county's been bound that they require you to have a licensed plumber. Okay, I think you're.
We know all of them.
Plumbers are not, you're, you're, they're just people who can afford a care called plumber or you're gonna get more of them. It's not just for me.
And I do agree with that, and I, again, I do agree with you, with you, because I worry that if you make the additional uh, fees to have another licensed plumber, it's, it is, there's a door going, if you wanna get it out of the, and it's, it's, it's clear not J I P S D. It's a middle.
I, I actually, that's the difference, and it's a, it's a major thing, if you want to do it. So this will go within the basket of one that we don't. I, I disagree with things that, so that's what we have.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Oh, oh, please. Martha?
Yes.
Yes. No. No.
Yes.
All right, district manager report.
All right, so what I wanted to kind of give you is an overview. If you go into the audit report for fiscal year twenty-two. This, it was just like this, ending June of twenty-two. There are specific references I have on here. And the first one is actually page fifteen.
Oh, four point four, you can start on, you can start on, on, you can start on, you can start on. So you do what I'm saying.
That's the, I remember it's part of.
Well, I think the motion on hold, that's really put an end to it, not approval, where they put an end to it. But hey, Dr. Mott, I thought I was going to approve it.
I'm making a motion to approve the um, ordinance. Okay, and then.
What's called, please? Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
District manager report.
Okay, so page fifteen of the audit report is the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance for governmental funds. And what you'll see in there is that the general fund ending balance as of the thirty of the June twenty twenty-two, nine million, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. And that represents nearly a twenty-nine percent increase in the prior year ending general fund balance. And this leads to the district in excellent financial position in the report. That represents a two million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars net change in general fund balance to the positive correction compared to the year ending two thirty of twenty twenty-one. You get this by adding the eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars in revenue exceeding expenditures. And then you go down, just below that is the add of one million, three hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. Firm seed from the sale of fixed assets associated with the sale of old fire station number one, plus the half an acre um, who sold the property on uh, that probably over twenty. And in general fund, um, as you can tell there at the end of year fiscal year twenty-two. However, it mainly because of general fund had very little in the way of capital outlay for fiscal year twenty-two. That's forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars in capital outlay representing some of the recent challenges associated with extremely long lead times to obtain vehicles and pieces of equipment. The justice solid waste department, uh, the automated side loader plus the vehicle dump truck represent a plan four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in the spending of the capital outlay for fiscal year twenty twenty remaining. There was two items alone, or ten times the last year's of the forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars in capital outlay for fifty uh, for fiscal year twenty-two. So this is a rare occurrence, if you just spend so little in capital outlay to the general fund. You add that on top of the proceeds, and that's why general fund balance is up so high. So for comparison purposes, two years ago, in fiscal year twenty, those general fund expenditures were eight million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that was with seven hundred and four dollars in capital outlay. So we actually spent less in fiscal year twenty for general fund expenditures than we did two years ago for fiscal year twenty. That's rare that we did two years ahead and spend less. So that's in a positive direction. Um.
Why?
Yeah, so, so we have to order those vehicles so far in advance um, that it's basically, the, the vehicles we tried to buy in fiscal year twenty-two, we didn't get. And so we're having to order them and wait so long to get them. So you'll see an increase in both fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-four in the capital outlay um, moving forward in those vehicles. We weren't able to extend it. Um, so um, that, that's in a positive direction. You were paying eighteen in the audit report. That's the statement of revenues, expenses and changes in net position for the proprietary fund. And that is also in a positive direction. So you, you see um, total operating revenue, nine million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Compared to total operating expense is six million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. It resulted in the operating income of two million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars. And this represents resources to be able to invest back into the wastewater fund. That trend continues in the page nineteen. Page nineteen is the statement of cash flow. Excuse me, for the proprietary fund. You can see how gas be seventy-five, other posted foreign benefits. That liability reduced by one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-one. And so that added to the net cash provided by operating activities, five million, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. Instead of wastewater for net equity, in cash, it had over five point two million, the last year. That's ten point, ten million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine for end of year cash. And that's positive momentum for the general fund and wastewater fund during fiscal year twenty-four. But the real hallelujah on there, the opening thirty-seven. And that is no except in posted foreign benefits, other than the financial. You'll see on there, no, that, you have O T A, um, as a commissioner, you can find a screen to the mountaintop. That the district unsustainable O T A liability would reduce by eight million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And you get that by taking the balance of June thirty of twenty twenty-one to a high O T A liability, nine point one million. And you look at the balance as of June thirty of twenty twenty-two, of O T A liability, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven dollars. And so that liability that will continue to decrease as they disfringe the remainder of the trust paid to the tire's healthcare company. And so.
You said that last one. Right, so.
The trust.
I just want to understand that part of it, that was, that was important to me.
So basically, the only cash that the district had previously was about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that was a one-time refund call that they got from a university for three months. They put that into the trust. However, the liability is over nine point one million.
Right.
And so that remaining cash and that plus, what we knew is we need to pay for the tire's healthcare money.
How long would that last for? Three, three, ten, twenty, or not so people?
Oh, yeah, so if you, the back of the manual, man here, if you take four hundred and eighty thousand. And you subtract three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven dollars. That's a hundred and twenty-two thousand, right? So, we're less than four years from when it started. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, so.
So twenty-three, twenty-four, about twenty-one?
Well, we paid all of uh, the major twenty-one, all of twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, problems.
But maybe that's the number for.
You know, it's, it's invested, so it's also based on what we heard of the online address. So then, what I want to bring your attention to is page fifty-one. And that is the combining statement of revenue, expenditures and changes in fund balance for the non-major fund. That's draw your attention to the capital project fund. The capital project fund is the first column, fund balance, end of year, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. So that capital project fund has a balance in it that would be used for a capital project. And um, I'm saying to see, you know, tonight, that we'll be coming back to the commission next year. And uh, we show you a request, basically to transfer an amount from the general fund to that capital project fund associated with fire station number two project. The proceeds from the sale of old fire station number one is a one-time resident refund call. That can be invested back into the fire station number two project. It would be much more in the region to come during the waves of new community for February, March of twenty twenty-three. But using the um, sale of the property, the old fire station number one, that can help dedicate according to cost of fire station number two, and the amount that the commission has to achieve again.
So I'm thinking about the page fifty-one.
Yes.
Is this the general fund or the private?
This is the non-major fund. So the district only only has four funds. You have the general fund, the wastewater fund, the capital project fund, and the debt payment fund.
Okay.
So they consider these non-major funds?
But, but I'm here, is I'm compared to audit the last year's audit. And last year, we had one vote based on building in the capital project fund. And it's like a really silly question, but when you're good, all that matters.
So if you look at the previous page. That's where you see the one point. So one million, uh, page fifty, first column, go all the way down, one million, eight hundred and seventy-two. Right?
Okay.
And so you see what, what you're really looking at there, the unassigned, so the unassigned fund balance, five thirty-nine, two oh nine. That just carries to the next page, but that's the ending fund balance, five thirty-nine, two oh nine. That means those are resources in that fund that are uncommuted.
Oh, okay, that's something else.
Um, so that is um, high level, Gary's gonna have a word for that for you. Gary can talk about the opinion, what they looked at, what they tested, um, but overall, if they unmonify in the opinion. And so that um, goes about it, a system for general controls within um, finance department, the legislature, the administration. That's, that's the best opinion we've got. And I can move on to the district manager report.
Committee J I P S representative reports, there are none. For spot and ordinance reports, there are none. Has anyone signed in for the oral written petition to the last part? No. I don't think whether. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you all for coming, happy holidays to you. Anybody? Lady?
Yes.
Okay, we have exited executive session where no action was taken. I would like to make a motion to modify and approve of the employment contract with district manager altering section four to ten hour per month of annual leave. Second. Do I have any discussion? What's called, please?
I was talking to the house session, I told. I just want to go on to an, a day fulfillment contract with this group. What is built into this contract is possible and can be done. So there is no raise on the table of the government, that's definitely not, part of the business, not. You think days raises are built into this contract with containers of this.
What's called, please?
Mr. Ralphell?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Milton?
Yes.
Mr. Postle?
Yes.
Your pool.
I make a motion for a turn. What's called, please?
Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Richard Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Milton?
Yes.
Mr. Postle?
Yes.
Your pool.
Meeting of the turn.